As global progress towards achieving the UN's Sustainable Development Goals. So joining with us today is my pleasure to introduce four excellent speakers from the University of Tokyo, Professor Katayama Sensei, and Dr. Erik, Director of Center for Sustainability Governance from IGES, Dr. Kumara, Deputy Director from the UNFCC Center for Environmental Technology, also by IGES, and also Dr. Muienti Linkdan, the Faculty of Environmental Climate Change and Urban Study from the National Economic University in Vietnam. So before inviting the keynote speaker to speak in our session, please allow me to spend a few minutes to share with you some background about the sessions and also to give you some idea what are the potential or what are the existing impact that COVID pandemic is now having on our world, especially in the field of environmental. So as you know, just yesterday, I just checked one of the most reliable sort of informations on the global impacts on the COVID from the Johns Hopkins University. And we found that up to yesterday, it's already more than 60 million cases of COVID infection has been confirmed around the world. And it's caused the death of more than 1.4 million people. And unfortunately, in Asia, more than 30% of the global infect case is from Asia. And more than 20% of them is more than 10% of the global deaths is also coming from Asia. So the COVID impact has a lot of impact to every aspect of our life, our human lives, also in every corner around the world. This also creates a challenge to the global commission, the commitment to work the Sustainable Development by the year 2030. As some of you may know, that in 2015, more than 150 countries around the world gathering at the UN Sustainable Development Summit and adopt 2020 Agenda for Sustainable Development. We consider 17 goals. It's so a global commitment towards achieving the Sustainable Development by the year 2030. So the SDGs call for collective actions by all the countries, no matter developed country, developing country, or poor country, in order to promote the prosperity whilst protecting the planet. And more important, the SDGs provide a very critical framework for the COVID-19 respond, recovery, and redesign. And actually, in Vietnam, the government of Vietnam also approved the National Action Plan for Implementations of 2030 Sustainable Development Agenda in 2017. It's setting a national goal and target to shape their ways for the future, for the country's future by the year 2030. And let's give you some very quick look how the COVID is now impact on a variety of the global SDGs. This is by on the latest report, which has been launched by UN very recently, on to show how the COVID implications on various aspects of our life. For example, in terms of the SDG goal number one is on poverty. The COVID is already caused, the first time ever, caused some increase in the poverty. So it means that the world will be off track to end the poverty by the year 2030 because of the COVID. In addition to that, it also creates some challenge on effect on the food security and also especially on the public health. So it reverse the decades of improvement in the public health, thank to the efforts from the many countries. And also it's got a lot of impact to the education as well. Like many schools around the world have to close because of COVID. So students cannot come to school. And also another issue about the gender issue. The COVID or the lockdown because of COVID also increases the risk of the violence against women and girls, especially during the lockdown. And you can see that there's recently, there's not many newspapers say that after the COVID, the number of divorces case has increased significantly just because of possibility, because of some kind of violations in the family, in the household. And also especially the COVID also have a lot of impact on the water qualities and sanitation and also so on. Just give you some idea, for example, recently, so many scientists around the world has already detected the COVID in the human feces, in the domestic, as well as in the hospital wastewater. And unfortunately, in ASEAN, especially in Asia, because of the lack of the wastewater treatment facility. So most of the COVID, I mean, most of the wastewater from the household just go directly to the river or lakes. So it creates a lot of huge potential for the infection if property, if properly action has not been taken. So similarly, we could find that there's so many detections of the COVID, not only in the wastewater, but also in the river, in the wastewater treatment plant, and also in Asia, where there's a lot of flooding. So the overflow from the seawater system also mixed with the rainwater and also cause some type potential risks for the people in the flooding area, especially during the flooding event. And also the issue of the medical waste, the issue of the hospital waste has not been properly addressed, especially in Asian country. So in terms of the economics, the COVID also creates a type of the economic regressions around the world, not on specific country, but at the global scale. And COVID mostly is happened in the dusty area, like in urban area. You can see here, right? And also however, the COVID already creates some, a lot of impact, negative impact to the society. But again, we can see some kind of positive impact it may bring. For example, many scientists found that the amount of greenhouse gas emission has been quite significantly dropped during the year 2020. And also the COVID also give us some kind of lessons that we have to look back the way we are now treating the nature, the way we are now consuming the resource and how to use the resource. We need to think how to make it more sustainable. So I think the SDGs will create a very critical framework for us to address this kind of this issue. So it's my pleasure again to introduce you many excellent expert speaker today who will give us more insightful about how the COVID impacts on variety of aspects, for example wastewater, medical waste, and also the global progress on SDG in general. So that's all from my talk for the framing presentation. Now, please allow me to invite the first keynote speaker, Dr. Erik. Erik is a Director of the Center for Sustainability Governance from the IGES. So he have a lot of experience working in the field of the SDG. So he will give you a very insightful understanding how the COVID would impact on the global progress on the SDG as well as the potential framework for addressing this challenge. Yeah, Erik Sam, please.
Okay, so thank you very much, Baosan, and good morning colleagues. It's a pleasure to be here today. And if it's okay, I'd like to start sharing my screen to do the presentation. Okay, can everybody see the slides?
Yes, we can see it.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to be presenting a little bit on this framework that colleagues at our institute for global environmental strategies have developed. We call the triple R framework. And this is focusing a lot on how we can ensure that we move on Sustainable Development trajectory in the wake of COVID. So as you can see, this is actually the effort based upon the efforts of many other colleagues. And I will break the presentation up into a few different sections. So I'll start briefly. You hold on for a second. Unfortunately, what happens when you're on an international call sometimes, sometimes you get some phone calls. Okay, so at any rate, I'll start off by talking about the COVID impacts and then go to a discussion of shocks, barriers, and policy coherence. Then I'll introduce this triple R framework and apply it to particular cases. And then just come out with a few discussion questions and key points. So first of all, I'd like to highlight that Baosan has already mentioned the impacts of COVID have been massive. The clearest impacts, of course, are in terms of what we've seen in loss of lives and also health impacts. But as Baosan also mentioned, there are many other impacts on the different Sustainable Development Goals. So this diagram right here demonstrates how COVID is bound up with all 17 of the different SDGs. And for instance, having impacts on sustainable cities and communities in terms of the exposure to different types of risks, but also creating opportunities in some cases. And I'll talk a little bit about those opportunities in just a second. And one of the key sets of impacts, of course, have been on the environment. So at our institute, we have teams that focus on waste management. So my colleague Kumara Sam will speak a lot on the waste management issue. But we've seen, for instance, increased amounts of disposable equipment and single-use plastics in some areas. We've also seen impacts on air pollution, which I'll talk about in a little bit greater detail. And in this case, we've seen that exposure to air pollution may actually worsen some of the impacts of COVID acting much like an underlying condition. But at the same time, some of the shutdown and lockdown activities have led to reductions in air pollution, especially in heavily polluted areas. So there's been sort of a mixed bag there. And as Baosan also mentioned, we've seen impacts on water and wastewater, as well as sustainable lifestyles and livelihoods. And I think in each of these areas, as I suggested, we can see both impacts that are negative, but also some opportunities. And now what I'd like to do is to try to put us in the frame of thinking a little bit about these opportunities. And to do that, I'd like to start with this quote from Nobel laureate Paul Romer, who's an economist at Stanford University. And one of the things that he highlights is that a crisis is a terrible thing to waste. And what he's referring to is a lot of times, when we have some type of external or sometimes we call exogenous shock to the way that we manage certain problems. And especially when we have a shock to our public policy systems or institutions, this can create an opportunity to change the direction and the way that those systems work or the way that our institutions structure and make decisions about certain problems. And part of the reason the shock can be so powerful is a lot of times when we want to change the nature of the way those systems work or the way that our public policy institutions work, it's very difficult. There's several different barriers. Some of them are technological in nature. Some of them are financial in nature. Some of them are institutional in nature. And many a times, these different barriers work together. They're sort of mutually reinforcing and create a situation where they lock us into a certain type of, in this case, development pattern. And what I would suggest to you is one of the challenges that we faced when it comes to the SDGs more generally is that we've been locked into a situation where basically been relatively unsustainable development patterns. And this varies across different countries, of course. But I would say on average, it's been very difficult for us to change the way that our public policy systems work so that we would place greater emphasis on environment. And so the exogenous shock, when it comes from sort of outside of the system, it breaks down a lot of these barriers, creates opportunities for new institutions to emerge and new interests to push forward. In this case, some of the objectives that are under the Sustainable Development Goals. Now, what we tried to do, and I just then is think about, okay, we have this exogenous shock. We have many of these barriers that are making it difficult to move on to a more sustainable development trajectory. But how do we take advantage of this quote-unquote window of opportunity? How do we take advantage of this crisis? And what I would suggest to you is it's important to have the shock, of course. But the shock in and of itself may be necessary to change the nature of our development, but it's not sufficient. And in order to actually take advantage and keep that window of opportunity open, what I would suggest is we need a coherent framework to organize the different decisions that governments are making on or related to COVID. And unfortunately, I think what we've seen when it comes to the environment is despite some of the opportunities I mentioned previously and also some of the threats, many of the government-related COVID plans and policies are rather piecemeal. They're not very coherent, and they're also very short-sighted. There's not strong consistency from one element to another, and there's not a lot of long-term thinking that's going into it. And so what we're suggesting, many of our colleagues that I just are suggesting, is this triple R framework, where we think about the response, the recovery, and then the redesign is going to be important if we're going to take advantage of this window of opportunity, this external shock. And I just want to highlight what I mean a little bit more concretely by this evidence of, by incoherence or short-sightedness. So one of the clearest pieces of evidence comes from some work that some of my colleagues are doing at IGS. And this is looking at the stimulus packages. So I think many of us are aware that governments have put a lot of money into trying to jumpstart economies during and after COVID. And what my colleagues have looked at is not only the amount of money that governments have put into this, but the extent to which that money is going to, quote-unquote, clean or sustainable pursuits, or in this case, fossil fuels and dirty and energy-intensive programs and activities. And what we can see here, this is a list of the G20 countries. And you can see the different stimulus packages broken up by the emphasis on the sort of dirty or fossil fuel investments versus the green ones, the cleaner ones. And you can see pretty much across the board that there's at least about 50% of these resources are going into things that are not so sustainable. And of course, this varies from one country to another. But this suggests that there's a lot of incoherence in the stimulus packages. And I'll just give you another example from, I mean, the country that I come from, the United States. So the big stimulus package in the United States is under what's called this CARES legislation. And if we look closely at this CARES legislation, what we'll see is that there are some provisions that provide, for instance, tax relief for renewable energy projects. But there's also a lot of provisions that provide loopholes for fossil fuel industries and also rollbacks on environmental regulations. I mean, this is done in the name of trying to, once again, restart the economy. But it goes against many of the ideas that are put forward in the SDGs and will not lead to this significant deviation from the business-as-usual development that I showed previously. So what I'm suggesting then is in order to take advantage of this exogenous shock in the case of COVID, what we really need to do is have coherent and consistent framework for organizing our decisions. And that coherent and consistent framework is going to consist of three different building blocks, what we're calling response, recovery, and redesign. And what I'm showing here in this diagram, I mean, I know it looks a little bit too many arrows going on. But what I'm showing in this diagram is in order to keep this window of opportunity open and to really lead to a more sustainable development path, that we need to bring this triple R framework into our decision-making. And in order to do that, one of the ways that we want to move forward, especially in IGS, is to not just say we need to think carefully about the response, recovery, and redesign, but take much of the science and the data that we are getting from our research and from some of the colleagues, you know, the more scientifically oriented work that's being done by this Fangjai Conference, and bring it into this framework. So the framework itself should be based upon science and it should be scientifically robust and evidence-based. And so the environmental impact should fit within this framework. Now then, let me move to what I mean by triple R and what are each of these different Rs referred to. Okay, so the response, by response, we're thinking about targeted interventions to address immediate impacts of COVID. And so like I said previously, my colleague Kumar, I think, will talk, for instance, about the waste issue. And I know they've done a lot of great work on thinking about how to deal with the increase in plastic waste and some of the medical waste. And so that's a relatively narrow intervention, but it has immediate impacts. And the recovery here, we're thinking a lot about how the stimulus is going to be allocated and also how to deal with potential rebounds in some of the environmental improvements that we've seen. So for instance, I mentioned air pollution has gotten better in some places. But how do we make sure that when the economy starts back up again, that we don't see a rebound in air pollution? So that's the recovery. And then the redesign is really thinking about systems. How do we change the different types of socioeconomic systems and our policymaking institutions to enable a more sustainable and equitable transition? So how do we bring new stakeholders into the decision-making process so that we can support some of the positive changes we're seeing with the initial response and with the recovery? And what I want to underline here is in order to make sure that we move a more sustainable track in line with the SDGs, we want to have good coherence and consistency between these three elements as well as within these three elements. And in order to do that, just to show the sort of differences between these elements. So they differ in terms of their temporal outlook, whether they're thinking near term, near to medium term, or long term. The scale and scope of change they're trying to achieve, whether it's a narrow intervention, relatively broader intervention, or a more systemic intervention. And then the targeted stakeholders. And we gradually expand the stakeholders out from immediately affected groups to supportive government agencies and other supportive or sympathetic groups. And then when we talk about redesign, to try to bring in even broader cross-section of existing and newly empowered interests, includes business, civil society. And the idea here is we try to sort of grow the support for this push for a more sustainable future and then bring together these different elements of the response, recovery, and redesign. Okay, now I'm just going to highlight one example of how this can be applied to the case of air pollution. We have a working paper on this that applies this triple R framework to waste management as well as sustainable lifestyles, as well as water management and wastewater management. But just to highlight in case of air pollution. So for instance, in terms of the response, we need to make sure we're responding to the crisis. Make sure that we target communities that have poor air quality. Because as I mentioned previously, some of these communities are suffering more from the impacts of COVID. We need to promote teleworking and non-motorized transport, once again, to deal with the immediate impacts. Now, the recovery for a low emissions future, once again, focusing on making sure we allocate stimulus to low carbon or low emissions policies and programs. And then also minimize rebounds, maintaining air quality improvements. And also focusing a lot on what we call co-benefits, thinking about the linkages between air pollution, climate change, and health, and using those linkages in some ways to determine how we're going to allocate some of the stimulus. And then the redesign case is focusing a lot on systems and institutions again. And here we talk about strengthening atmospheric governance, enhancing coordination between different agencies that are responsible for air pollution, climate change, and health. Reconsidering our infrastructure planning, because this is like institutions, the infrastructure will have long-lasting impacts. And then also making sure that our institutions are responsive to marginalized stakeholders. So bringing in poorer communities, once again, that might be more susceptible to the impacts of COVID. So this is just highlighting one possible application. I would underline that the actual application in different countries might vary a little bit. And I would also underline, as I'll suggest towards the end, that while I'm doing this on a sort of sector, bisectional basis, part of the emphasis for having these three different categories is also to align across different sectors our actions. So that's one, the case of air pollution. And I just want to highlight, this is a difference from a business-as-usual. BAU stands for Business As Usual Standard Practice. So in the standard practice, of course, we see the response to the crisis is consisting of the lockdowns, social distancing, the testing and masks, and then reduce the air travel, public transportation. The BAU case, once again, recovery for industries. So here we see the income support for fossil fuels, which I highlighted with some of the work that I showed on the stimulus packages. And then the redesign for future pandemics. Here, there has been some effort to redesign institutions. But I would suggest to you, a lot of times, it's dealing more with the symptoms of the problem as opposed to some of its root causes and tends to be a little bit more at the end of the pipe as opposed to the source. So what we're suggesting is rather than follow this business-as-usual case to follow the case that I suggested for air pollution. And I'm not going to go into so much detail here, but just to suggest that in our working paper on this, once again, we apply it to different policy areas. And this just gives you a sense for flavor of the different applications. And I'll just let you look at that briefly, just to underline that we contrast that once again with the business-as-usual. So this, in many ways, this slide right here is the more detailed description of the applications. And it gives some substance to the difference between those two lines that I was drawing, the business-as-usual and the more sustainable trajectory that's aligned with the Sustainable Development Goals. Okay, so let me conclude by... Let me conclude by suggesting some key messages. While COVID-19 is causing tremendous suffering and loss, it's also up in opportunities for changing or reorienting our development paths. In order to take advantage of this window of opportunities, policymakers need an integrative and coherent framework for organizing their different decisions related to COVID. Such a framework will lead the way to more transformative change, which is in line with the aspirations of... And then last but not least, we need to apply this framework to enhance coordination and coherence within, not only within, but across multiple issues. And this integrated approach is also very much in line with the SDGs. So I will stop there. And I hope that what I described here was understandable, especially to a non-policymaking or policy research audience. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Erik Sam, for your very informative information and very nice presentations on the triple R framework to address for the COVID respond, recovery, and also redesign. And especially how the framework can be applied in, for example, in the field of air pollution control and also climate change mitigation and so on. So next, I'd like to open floor for the question from the audience as well as from other speaker. Is there any questions from the audience and other speaker? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, if no one, so can I ask a question? Yeah, as you pointed out, that the three R is very important for the Sustainable Development. But I just wonder, what is the most difficulty to implement three R? But I just wonder, what is the, the most difficulty to implement three R for the. Developing country where we have a very limited skills, experience and resources, including human and also the financial. So what is your, your suggestion for the developing country to implement the three R?
Okay, yeah, thank you so much, Dr. Wu San and. I fully understand the point that you're raising, so. Let me, let me make a few comments on this. So first of all, I, I do agree, I mean, I think. In the developing country context, the applications of this. Framework might be a different from what you might see in. Developed country context. And also I think. One of the bigger challenges. I would say both in developed and, and developing countries is especially the, the redesign element. I mean, I think that there's. A lot of difficulties in taking systems and. And changing the way that they work. When, when I say systems here, I mean, for instance, the way that. The Ministry of Environment works with the Ministry of Finance, okay? Having said that. I think that there's also a lot of opportunity here. I mean, I think what we're seeing is that. Even in developing country context, there's two things that are happening. I mean, I think one is that. There are some developing countries that are allocating public resources to try to revive the economy. And so I think that that creates an opportunity. I think also we're seeing in terms of official development assistance, a lot of more resources now being. Targeted, of course, on COVID and also economic revitalization. So those two streams of revenue, I think it's important that they go to, to. To places that will be potentially most sustainable. And, and then, I mean, in terms of, you know, where to target this. I think, you know, one of the points that I want to highlight in terms of the redesign is I think there's an important opportunity here for the ministries of environment. To work more proactively and more constructively with the ministries of finance. And to use things like the SDGs as a way to determine how those resources get allocated. So I would suggest that the redesign in some ways is perhaps one of the most challenging aspects, both across developed and developing countries. That new funds are coming in both in developed and developing countries. And one of the key areas to target is to work to try to bridge sometimes the unhealthy divide between the ministries of environment. And ministries of finance, the relatively high level like answer to your question, I'm, I'm coming at it from a governance perspective. I think, you know, you might hear from other colleagues, some more on the ground type of interventions and I'll leave them to, to provide some of those on, on the ground suggestions. But thank you for the question.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you very much, Eric San. Any, is there any other question from the audience? Actually, I also have a small question related to Dr. Kang. I saw in your presentation, you mentioned a lot about the economics stimulus package. By developed country, for example, you had another country. But when I reviewed those in developing country, more of the economics stimulus package is spent for supporting the visiting sector. Or for the people and so on. Not much about emphasize on the like energy sector and so on, clean energy and so on. Of course, there's many reasons behind this decision. Because of lack of virtues and like some, some kind of other issue, but. In, in, in your opinions, what could be the priority area that those country can consider? As a priority area for applying the triple R framework, yeah.
Okay, yeah, thanks very much for that, Baosan. So I'm, I'm gonna. I, I like this question a lot and I'm gonna. So I mean, some of the options, I think Kamara San will talk about a little bit in the context of. Disposable but waste, I think is, you know, something that's very concrete on the ground. And some of the options, I think, you know, you could talk about wastewater management. But in terms of air pollution, for instance, and in the case of, let's just say Southeast Asia. One of the big causes of air pollution in Southeast Asia, I think, as we know, is. Indoor air pollution. So I mean, I think a lot of the focus in. With COVID has been on, on outdoor air pollution. But one of the things that we've seen is because of COVID and because of the lockdowns of economies, people are spending a lot more time indoors these days. And what this has done is actually increased exposure to indoor air pollution. So one of the areas I think that can be targeted, which has an environmental and health focus, of course. Is in line with, so you know, what you're suggesting is, you know, a lot of these resources are not going necessarily to big renewable energy projects. Is to trying to. Bring clean cook stoves. And in some cases, you know, this is not necessarily just a financial problem, it's a capacity building problem. It's an information sharing problem. So a lot of times it's also sort of software around some of these programs. But focusing on clean cooking, I think could have, you know, huge impacts. We already know it'll have huge impacts. And would be a very good place for resources to be targeted. Both in terms of finance, but also capacity building and, and related sort of software.
Yeah, thank you very much, Eric San. I absolutely agree with your advice and suggestions on, on this. So I also received one question from the audience on the chat box. They like to add about the win-win status of the cheaper bottom line. Win-win status.
Yeah.
Super bottom line, yeah.
Sure.
Can you share it?
Sure. Okay, so this is, I mean, a little bit. In some ways related to the points I was raising, but. The triple bottom line, as far as I understand it, is a approach commonly promoted among the private sector, among businesses. Which suggests that there should be a strong emphasis on achieving environmental, social. As well as economic ends. And, and in so doing that there would be. You know, mutually beneficial relationship between those, those, the, the economic, social and, and. Environmental. Dimensions. And so for instance, if I'm a company that, let's just say I manufacture shoes. That, you know, by trying to reduce the amount of water that I use. And making sure that the people are paid a livable wage. That also in so doing, my profits will increase. So this will be good for the social aspects, environmental aspects. As well as the economic aspects. And this approach, I think, is approximately 20, maybe 25 years old or so. I think. You know, it, it has got a lot of uptake in private sector. And I think what we see now. Is it sort of in advance of that. I mean, I think we see now companies using a lot of, they, you know, they call this ESG. So this is environmental, social and governance impacts to evaluate. Both their internal operations and also to try to bring in resources from external investors. So I think the answer to your question, the status is, I think the approach is relatively well accepted and has matured quite a bit. Especially to bring in resources from external investors. Now, just to tie this back a little bit to the triple R framework, I think that the common point here is that. You know, if, if we do things in a way where we truly try to achieve synergies between. Our near term, medium term and long term goals. And across our different sectors. There, those synergies can. Provide an engine for transformative change. I mean, so the shoe company that I was talking about, that does this well. I mean, it could grow into not just, you know, a small shoe company, but a large shoe corporate corporation. Similarly, I mean, if we get the synergies right between these. Response, recovery and redesign elements. This can provide an engine for the type of transformative change that we envisage when we talk about. Trying to achieve 17 of really aspirational goals by 2030. So I, I hope that answers your question, but it's a slightly different topic, but I tried to tie it into some of the points that were.
Yeah, thank you, but thank you very much, Dr. Eric. I hope Dr. Eric respond is make sense to your questions. Would you like to have any further questions for Dr. Eric?
They're saying thank you very much.
Okay, is there any other questions for Dr. Eric's? From the audience and also from other speaker?
If, if not. Can I just make one last point before I close?
Yes, yes, please, yeah.
Yeah, actually two last points. I, I mean, I talked a little bit to Dr. Wu San and Dr. Ba about my presentation before we started. I guess the thing I want to highlight is. I know this conference has a very strong focus on more technical elements. This triple R framework, I, I mean, the, I, perhaps I went into a little bit too much depth, but the. Part of the point really is, you know, from a governance perspective or from, I'm a political scientist by training. I mean, we, we think of our world as sort of built upon different structures and institutions that influence how we make decisions. And that system in some ways parallels what we see in our natural systems. And so if we have some type of dramatic shock from outside, just like it can change our natural systems, it can also change our social systems. And the point is that in order to take advantage of that, we also from a sort of researcher side or social science side. We need to have a framework in place that keeps that window of opportunity open so that. We actually move our systems in a way that's in this case more sustainable. So I'm just trying to bring this a little bit more in line with the, some of the other. Segments of this important conference. And the very last point is I apologize for the very beginning, my, my, my mom called in on Skype, so I apologize for the, the initial disruption, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Eric San for your excellent presentation and informations. So once again, thank you very much. Please allow me to move to the next keynote speaker. May I introduce Professor Katayama Sensei, a very well-known international expert in the field of microbiology. So we can hear from him how the COVID impacts the wastewater sector and how we can turn this gap challenge into the opportunity. Yes, Professor Katayama Sensei, yeah, please.
Thank you for the introduction. I'll share my slide. Oh, wait, maybe. Can you see my slide?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, so let me start my presentation today. Thank you very much for inviting me here. I'm very honored to be a keynote speaker in this session. And actually, according to the program, the, I have only two or three minutes, but I will take longer time probably. The, today I will talk about wastewater epidemic for novel coronavirus and my, okay. This is my laboratory logo and this contains water and viruses. And we are specialists in this, this, the field. And let me begin with the movement in the international society on water. The, in the year of 1977, the United Nations already started to commit the. The, the water supply, the old people, whatever the stage of development and social and economic condition. Has the right to have access to drinking water in quantities and of a quality equal to their basic needs. So the United Nations commit the water supply here in the year 1977. And the recently, not very recent, but recently, the. United Nations also has the International Year of Freshwater 2003. And they again mentioned, but this time not only water, but also sanitation as well. No single measure would do more to reduce disease and save lives in the developing world. Than bringing safe water and adequate sanitation to all. So the sanitation becomes a key point here because the disaster can bring the passengers to the people. Through lack of adequate sanitation. So the United Nations noticed the problem of the passengers or water issues on public health. And. So, so that along with their, the statement in the first year, that they started Millennium Development Goals. The Millennium Development Goal is. Started before the Sustainable Development Goals and this started from 2005 to 2015. And there was eight targets, but amongst, among that, there are, there are one. Target or goal that by 2015, the proportion of the population without sustainable access to safe water. Safe drinking water and basic sanitation. So this means we have to make the people half. Who lacks the access to the water and sanitation. And when we started this one, so nobody think this target is possible to achieve. But actually, we succeeded in making half. The people who has lack of access to safe drinking water. Before the target year, but in case of the basic sanitation, we couldn't achieve the target to make the half, make the people. The proportion to half. So this is the, our, the session before the starting of the SDGs. So United Nations mentioned the. Declare the Sustainable Development Goals in the 2015 as a success of Millennium Development Goals. And in the goal number six, we have water, clean water and sanitation. So the, there, we, we. Facts, in the fact sheet, the WHO. And UNICEF indicated that three in 10 people lack access to safely managed drinking water service. And 16, 10 people lack access to safely managed sanitation facilities. And each day nearly 1,000 children die due to preventable water and sanitation-related diarrhea disease. So diarrhea is keyword here, that water and sanitation is connected to diarrhea. And that's why water is important and sanitation is important in the field of public health. So the, I picked up some key facts, diarrhea disease is the second reading cause of this. Under five years old, or each year diarrhea kills around 500,000 children. And. Significant proportion can be prevented through safe drinking water and education, adequate sanitation. And diarrhea is a leading cause of malnutrition in children under five years old. So that diarrhea is a very important issue in the, the. Public health, especially in the young children in developing countries. And water and sanitation is a key control, controlling parts. But this is another evidence by Professor Hunter, Paul Hunter from United, United Kingdom. And this bubble chart shows. Infant mortality rate as Y axis and. Total unserved as X axis. And total unserved means that if this is zero. And total unserved means that if this is zero, which means one hundred percent of the people gets access to safe drinking water. And if it is twenty, then eighty percent of people have access to the safe water, but twenty percent of the people has no good access to safe drinking water. And this means the, if we have access to the safe water, we have less infant mortality rate. So the, the children under five years old can survive longer than those who has lack of access. And also this shows some relation to the GDP. So the, if we have more GDP per capita, then we have more access to the safe water. But if we have less GDP, then we don't have enough access to the safe water and then we have no we have less survival ratio. And if we just look at Africa case only, but we have similar tendency as well. So that this is very strong connection and the lack of access to the water and the infant mortality rate has a very close relation. And this is caused by diarrhea, which is caused by public microorganisms. So this is the fate of pathogens in water. The pathogens are increasing in human intestine. So they are not increasing in the environment or in water. They are increasing in the intestine only and emitted as feces and included in the feces and diffuse and decrease. So they have natural die-off in the environment, so their concentration will go down. However, the, in the feces, tremendous number of public microorganisms will be emitted in the feces per day, for example. But if you take only one microorganisms, you have, let's say, the probability of one percent infection or less than one percent infection, or sometimes more than one percent of infection. So the diffuse and decay is not sometimes enough. So we need to prevent those transmission. So the pathogens can transmit via water and we are concerned about that. But if we have enough water, then we can wash hands and we can make the surrounding clean. Or if we have clean water supply, then we can the cuts passway from water to mouth. Or if we boil the water or cook the food, then we can have the safe food and water. So we are making ourselves more safe by doing this. And also infrastructure, including water supply and sanitation. So the, this is the situation of how we are protecting ourselves in terms of the preventing the infection of enteric viruses. So this is our field. The microbiology is there and public care sector is also concerned about pathogens in water. But also, we are environmental engineer who is interested in the water supply and sanitation also has the interest in the person in the water. And PCR, maybe most of you know the PCR because of coronavirus, novel coronavirus. And the PCR is the detection method of coronavirus. To the genome or RNA of coronavirus can be directed by this method. And this method is actually a game changer in the past. So before PCR, the only medical microbiologist or virologist can deal with viruses. And they use culture method. And they are concerned about how to, what kind of virus are you or is there? So that they are very much concerned about the identification of viruses. But after PCR, the identification is already done by this method. So that we are no more interested in identifying. And from nineteen nineties, we started to apply this method to the environmental samples, including water. And we, environmental engineer can work on the viruses in water. And we have, we are engineers, so we need quantitative data. So we are passing more quantitative manner. So that the patient in water, this research field dramatically changed by PCR. And now the this, actually, my name is here, but the, we also already published a lab paper on the progress in detection methods and prevalence of human enteric viruses in water. So the passengers in water is in our hand already in terms of the quantitative, the research. So and this, now we are working on the SARS-CoV-2, novel coronavirus. And this slide is the front page of the one international conference. Which was held in the November eighth, very recent, and my students presented this. And there we used some surrogate virus as a test virus. And tested various type of concentration method and RNA extraction method and the applied it to the PCR detection and succeeded in detect the SARS-CoV-2. Yeah, I will introduce some of the results. And before going to the results, this is the, what we, the, the concept the, of the wastewater-based epidemiology. The, the, some infected people emit SARS-CoV-2 in the feces. And the consequently, the viruses will be transported to this, the wastewater treatment plant. Then if we monitor the influence of wastewater treatment plant, then we may be able to monitor the, the, the infection situation in the service area. So that if we can monitor the virus in the sewer system, then we may be able to know the number of people, infected people before medical surveillance can catch that phenomena. So the, we tried to, the tests, the various methods and applied it. And actually, the, we, as I said, we worked on the viruses and in the water, so we can apply our method. But the problem is that the, our method is applicable to the SARS-CoV-2 or not. That's the, the key question there. And before starting our, the, introducing our result, there was one review paper. And the presence of SARS-CoV-2 RNA in wastewater has been reported already. And the SARS-CoV-2 RNA in wastewater can be used to monitor COVID nineteen in the community. And effective concentration method is needed for recovery. And surrogate coronavirus data help to predict survival coronavirus COVID-2. And data on the infectivity of SARS-CoV-2 in wastewater for discussion are limited. So this is limitation, we cannot tell the risk of infection via water because we can detect only RNA, but we are not detecting SARS-CoV-2 or infectious SARS-CoV-2. So that we don't know if this is really the risk factor or not. Anyway, the another post, the limitation or challenging is the virus emission by human in feces. So this is the number of feces emitted. And this gray dot is from stool. So the, most of the case, people are not the emitting the coronavirus in the feces. And the some very limited number of people will emit. This is the number of infected in, and the, this is expected locked in SARS-CoV-2 gene copies per day. So the, this is very narrow. So we have a small chance to have the high concentration of SARS-CoV-2 if only one infected guy is there. But if we have ten infections, infected people, then we have more likely to have a good number. And if you have one hundred, then we surely have the very large number of the coronavirus in sewer. So the, if we have limited number of infections, then we may miss the SARS-CoV-2 RNA in the wastewater. And the challenge is that enveloped virus or non-enveloped virus. So actually, we are working on no, non-enveloped virus for long time because those viruses are causing diarrhoeal disease. For example, norovirus or other enteric viruses, polio virus even is the belonging to this kind of the viruses. But SARS-CoV-2 is coronavirus, which has envelope. Envelope is a repeat surrounding the, the protein body of viruses. And this repeat has, will have probably the hydrophobic the property and interfere with our virus concentration method. And this is other examples that we tested the coherpes virus, which has repeat and we failed in recovering in a good manner. But we, if we try polio virus, then we have more recovery in the yeah, our concentrate. So we need to test the concentration and we tested three types, different types of concentration method. And two different types of RNA extraction method. And we, all six result we tested and they tried to compare the recovery ratio. Recovery is how much we seeded in the test water and how much recovered in the the test tube or PCR, in the final PCR. And we used three different type of raw sewage and the tested if the method is really the robust or not. And we found this method is rather robust and stable and the good for five, six as well. So that we adopted this method to test the real wastewater in Japan. And we have weekly sampling and the wastewater raw sewage is sent to our laboratory and tested using the best method we obtained there. And that we got some positive from the, some of the wastewater in July. So the, we confirmed that this, our method, actually, we used surrogate virus. But our method was really applicable to SARS-CoV-2. And we didn't use SARS-CoV-2 in our lab for the testing phase because SARS-CoV-2, use of SARS-CoV-2 is limited. So that we use this one to only the real sample test. Okay, so that, this is summary that the water is an important vehicle of pathogens. And water and sanitation is connected to public health via pathogens. And PCR was a game changer in the field of fasting in water. Wastewater-based epidemiology is useful to, to monitor COVID nineteen in the community. And SARS-CoV-2 RNA was detected from wastewater in Japan. That's it from me. And this is actually the TV snapshot that my, my, the, our, the result were broadcast in Japan. Yeah, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Professor Katayama Sensei, for your very insightful talk and also very impressive result of the, using the PCR for the detections of the SARS-CoV-2 in the wastewater. Because Thai limited, so why I invite maybe one or two questions from the audience. Is there any question from the audience or from the other speaker for Professor Katayama Sensei?
Okay, Sensei, can, can I have a question? Yeah, in your presentation, you just briefly saw the result of the SARS-CoV-2 detection in the West, Japan, Japan. So I just wonder, did you find any interesting information or interesting the relation, relationship between the detection of the virus SARS-CoV-2 in the wastewater and the number of infected cases in the area that you collected wastewater?
Yeah, the, obviously, we need more infection to detect SARS-CoV-2 in a stable manner. The, the, our positive result is came, coming from samples, which we have one thousand infection per week in Tokyo. So that probably now we can detect SARS-CoV-2 if we take samples in Tokyo or some other area as well. But the, we, our detection was not stable. This means that we may miss the SARS-CoV-2 RNA in wastewater as well. So if we have ten times more infection in the community, then we are sure that we can stably detect like in European countries or US. But now the, the concentration of SARS-CoV-2 seems to me a kind of the detection limit. So that we cannot say any quantitative things at the moment. So that we may be better to narrow down the target area. So not such wastewater treatment plant, but to the monitoring the smaller community or dormitory or hospitals or the carehouses or those things can be possible, but yeah. But still, we need more the sampling and the system. So we cannot do that, yeah.
Yeah. So may I have a, just one question related to Dr. Kang question as well? You know that in the, in developed country like in Japan, you have very good wastewater treatment system. So this is one of the very effective barrier to stop the, to minimize the risk of the infection to the community from the wastewater. However, the situation in developing country, like even in Vietnam, the, the percentage of the wastewater treatment is very small, very small, like only ten or twelve percent. And the most of them just discharge directly into the lake and river and so on. So the potential is very huge. So what could be the, your suggestion, how to break this gap, how to minimize this gap, potential risk of infection from wastewater, especially for the, so people who work at the wastewater treatment plant, yeah?
Hmm, the, the, the fundamental problem is maybe the willingness to pay of the people for the wastewater treatment or wastewater management. But this is the, not very closely related to your question, but the the, for the COVID new, novel coronavirus, probably the disinfection does work. But for other enteric viruses, disinfection of wastewater is not so much recommended because they have limited the effectiveness. So that the treatment is better. So that maybe we need to combine with disaster management probably. So that in the normal situation, the, of course, the water environment does have some impact from the untreated wastewater. But for the safety management, maybe disaster management is more important, I think.
Right, okay, thank you, Sensei. So in essence, although Thai is very limited, but I, I just want to give priority for one question from the, from the audience, from chat box. We will receive the, the audience, the We received, the, the audience said that the COVID has been detected in the urine and feces from the patient. So there's he or her question is whether it can transmit through the fecal and oral transmission or not? Sensei, can you?
The, the basically, no. Why? Because the, novel coronavirus is very weak in the acid. So that, that if we just take small number of coronavirus, the, the, in the stomach, we can kill them. So that this is a very strong immune system. But the, the, because they have large number of coronavirus in the intestine. Because probably the increased number of coronavirus in the throat or lung can, the continuously, the introduced to the stomach. And very small number of coronavirus passed through the intestine. And there, they can increase the number. And interestingly, that if the some epidemiological evidence says that if we have some, the medicine to control the stomach, to reduce their acid. Then the people who infected to the coronavirus has less severe syndrome. Which means if the coronavirus has infection in the stomach, then our immune system became more active. And our, the symptom became less severe. That is possible, but no medical or the evidence was, is there. But the, some, my, this is my speculation actually, the, not, not really the established opinion by the medical people. But the, the, if the infection in the stomach is here, then the total body immune system becomes more, I mean, the reactive and strong.
Yeah, okay, thank, thank you, Katayama Sensei. Because we are leaving behind the schedules, although we have many, many questions. So please allow me to move to the next speaker, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, yeah, I enjoyed my talk.
Yeah, thank you very much. So next, may I invite Dr. Kumora? Dr. Kumora is Deputy Director from the UNEP Collaborating Center on the Innovative Technologies from IGS. Dr. Kumora has already had a lot of experience, more than twenty-five years experience working in the field of the wastewater management. So today's, Dr. Kumora will share with us a more insightful story, how the COVID is impacted the waste sector. Dr. Kumora, please, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Let me share my screen. I hope you can see my screen.
Yes, we can see it, yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you again for, for inviting me to this very important event. So it's my pleasure to be with you today. So as the organizing committee asked me to talk about the COVID-19 pandemic and its impact towards waste and the chemical management. So this presentation is myself and my colleagues Rajiv was prepared for this conference. So I would like to briefly share, give a introduction to the subject and some findings, what we're doing so far in the, in this subject. And some recommendation and the conclusion. So as you see, my presentation is based on the recent publication that our institute was done with the UNEP. As a quick response to the needs of the national and the local governments. And we published wastewater management during the COVID-19 pandemic. So it's now in both English and the Japanese languages and widely used by the national and the local governments. At some kind of a guide, guiding book for how to, how to make their waste management systems in this pandemic situation. Actually, that was based on two methodologies, some quick literature review and also the questionnaire survey. We did with fifteen countries, including Asia, Pacific, Africa and Latin America. And we tried to analyze both policy and practices in managing waste management in general. But given much emphasis on the healthcare waste management during the COVID-19. And at the same time, identifying some practices for immediate response, using what my colleagues Eric is explained like three R. So looking at how the, the countries and the cities can respond this situation based on recovery and redesign the systems. So I, I want to, because this session is mostly SDG, I want to give you a little bit, a quick snapshot of how SDG progress in the Asia-Pacific region. Because recently, UNSCAP publishes two thousand twenty report of the progress in achieving SDG in Asia and the Pacific. So you can see, my subject is mostly this sustainable consumption, it's a, it's a goal twelve. And where the mostly waste and the, the chemical are included, especially in eleven point six target and the twelve points three, twelve point four and five. All we found, there is no, there is no progress actually, it is going backward in, in Asia and the Pacific. So this is very clear in what the recent two publications came from, the World Bank and one in Asia. Where our, our team also worked in these two, two reports identified. Even though before COVID-19 situation, waste management and the chemical management in, in Asia and the Pacific. And also globally in developing countries is mostly lacking. So it's mean there are capacities in making waste management before the COVID-19 is, is weak. So that's make very understandable for us when the COVID-19 came suddenly. So the, the countries who have less capacity, less resources and the less system in place have getting more vulnerable in dealing with the COVID-19 situation. So we found most of our cities, developing countries, getting panic in handling the situations. Because the, the waste management was increased, particularly healthcare waste, increasing the situation. And at the same time, some type of waste, like my colleague Eric mentioned, plastic, this kind of a big waste getting increased. But there are available facilities and, and the collection systems, these are lacking. So then they had to find how to handle this overestimated, overcrowded demand in, in very less resources and the less capacities. So at the same time, we found very interesting thing, like quickly, almost even the pandemic. There were a lot of national policies and the local policies, regulations to, to proper management of the waste, including the healthcare waste. And when the pandemic came quickly, most countries and the cities came up with lot of waste management guidelines, policies and so on. But the issue is not making these guideline policies based on the developed countries' experience or the need of the international demand. But how to implement them in, in more proper manner. That was we found the institution and also the resources in implementing these policies and the legislation. And the guideline was very weak in, in, in the countries. And another one we found very interesting one is also the disparities between the urban and the rural and the urban and the peri-urban. In, in, in allocating the resources and allocating the infrastructure and to, to, to handle the pandemic situations. Because this is a case where we study in Indonesia. You can see most of the, the facilities as well as the resources were focused on the western Indonesia, especially Sumatra and Java regions. But when it's go to the eastern Indonesia and the central part, there, there were huge gap between this allocation of the resources. And the allocation of the technologies to, to infrastructure to manage the, the situation. So these areas is mostly getting vulnerable to, to handle the waste management within this pandemic situation. So then I want summarize some of our findings, like my colleagues Eric's mentioned. So we look at how the cities and the national governments take quickly to, to work on this, to waste management subject in, in under the pandemic situation. We found they had to quickly respond the situation, that is what we learned, most cities and the governments are taking. So we found it's very important in the two areas. One is ensuring the health and safety of measures to the waste workers and also the, the staff who already involved in this waste management systems. This is mostly, we found this is not different between the developed or the developing countries. Even in Japan, we found that is one of the main challenge, what the Minister of Environment is, is mentioned in our work, so interviews. That how to educate the people and the, and the waste workers to make them more, more safety in, in the collection and the managing the waste. The second, we found the developing countries particularly need prepare contingency plans. Because while I mentioned they don't have enough resources and that they have capacities, though. But at the same time, they had to look at how they quickly work on to manage this situation with their limited capacities and the resources. And changing their waste collection systems and then changing their waste treatment, treatment system. So that need more, more contingency plans to make out. And also we found especially in developing countries, this situation. So they had to secure life and the livelihood of the informal sector and the waste workers and also the women's. Who mostly involved in this waste management business in, in the developing countries due to the lack of formal waste management systems in the cities and the countries. So that, that is very important aspect, we found very quickly they need to respond. Because they are the ones who, who totally handle the waste management system. In some cities, hundred percent, these informal people are, are managing the waste sector. So how to, how to, how to secure their livelihood and the life is very important. But it is not enough that my colleagues Eric mentioned. So we, the cities and the government said to look at this COVID-19 as not the challenge, as an opportunity to change their system, to, to move forward, to recover and redesign. So we found that it's need midterm, that the recovery process, where they had to introduce proper supporting schemes for the informal sector. To continue their work and also increase their waste collection and the recycling systems. At the same time, we found its data management and the, and the collection of the information and then making more long-term planning perspective during the recovery process. And redesign, we, we always found that it is very important as mostly moving from this waste management to more resource efficient society. That is the ultimate goal in, in the waste management system. So it's not that's collect and dump in somewhere, it should be more, more designed to the, including waste recovery, reuse, reducing and then more sustainable lifestyle systems to, to make the waste management. So that is, I found, we found that the need more international coordination and networking at the regional level. And then building the, the capacities of the cities and the local national governments, based on the evidence-based planning and the monitoring. So I just want to conclude my, my discussion and also the points. What we learned that, as I mentioned, this is a good opportunity for the, for the cities and the, and the national governments to look at their waste management system. And then think about long-term improvement in, in the subject. But in, in, in two ways, what we learned, like these three Rs, what my Eric colleague Eric mentioned, like ready, like quickly changed to the redesign. They need to think about three very important sectors. What we found like a system change, it is very important how they moving from the current, the collect and dump kind of a waste management system to more sustainable waste management system. Linking other, other development activities. At the same time, it is not easy, if they don't have proper institution and the sound institution with the resource, resource availability. At the same time, the people, finally, all this can be happen when we have a very good agents to change. Like we starting from the household, who can support the system separating garbage at household level and reducing waste generated at the household level. To the waste collectors and the transporters and the city staff and the national staff, private sector, all should be involved in this process. So improving these three urban environment, we feel that the cities and the national governments can take actions to, to handle this COVID-19 situation. And redesign their systems to properly go forward in the post-COVID situations. So thank you very much. If you want more information, please access to IGS or the CCT website, so you can get these reports. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Kumora. Hello, thank you so much, Dr. Kumora, for sharing with us very interesting, but also very important finding regarding how the COVID will impact on the waste sector in many countries, especially in Asia. And very interesting to see how the trip, pre-work again, has been applied in, 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 to address the challenge in the waste, waste sector. To how to respond to the risks of the, from the COVID and how to recover and how to design, redesign the system, the waste management system in order to address the challenge. So with that, may I invite, like to open floor for the question from the audience, for the, for the, for the presentation from Dr. Kumora, yeah? Is there any question from audience also from other speaker as well? And actually, just for your information, before you, before you raise a question, actually, Dr. Kumora has a lot of experience working with many national and also local government in Asia, especially in ASEAN. And to support many country to build a cap, a national strategy on solid rate management. And recently, he worked with the government of Myanmar to support the Myanmar government to build, to establish the national strategies on solid rate management in, in Myanmar. So he have a lot of practical experience. So please feel free to, to ask him any questions on, on, on related to this area, yeah? Yeah.
Yeah, this is Eric, can I ask a question to Kumora-san?
Yeah, sure.
Hi Kumora-san, thank you so much for your presentation. I probably could just talk to you and I just, but I think it's an important point that I think is probably useful for sharing more broadly. I mean, at the very end, you, you mentioned this, you know, the importance of the redesign. And of course, this is something I also emphasize, I think it also applies to even the wastewater management system. I'm just wondering, you know, you, you did some really good empirical research. Have, have you seen any evidence or any effort so far to redesign systems? I understand we're still going through COVID right now, but do you see any, any of the policymakers at national city level actually making efforts in that direction?
Thanks Eric, yes, we found some cities also not just respond to the situation. So they are taking some initiatives to redesign their waste management systems to the future. But as I mentioned, so what we see this is happening, the cities where the two things I, I feel very important. One is the cities where very strong political leadership is, is available. So then it is easy for them to, what we learned that they, they take some kind of initiative to, to that direction. At the same time, cities where the, I, I feel it is kind of a governance systems are working. Because not only the city, a very strong academic or the civil societies are, are available. And then they, they are sometimes, not the city take the directions, but that kind of a groups take some leadership and, and make some efforts to make the city to start something, to rethink the, the situation. So that kind of, I feel like a top-down, like a political leadership take a direction and also the bottom of where the, the. the the other stakeholders take take some kind of a directions to to make that redesign process in the in the cities and the governments. Yes, we can see, but not very, very everywhere, but the the some some actions are coming from some cities where we are working. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Kumara. Is there is there any other questions from the audience? Actually, I have before that, I have one question for Kumara-san, actually, you know, you know that in uh many developing country, uh many country have to heavily rely on the landfill, which is which is not often the center sanitary landfill. Um and as a result, there's a there's a lot of potential risks uh of the infection from 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 the for the solid red, because in many developing country, sometimes medical waste, it has been mixed up with the municipal solid red as well. So the people who the person who most a trick is the 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 worker from wet management worker, for example, in Vietnam is a urinco and so on, urinco stop. Do you do you have any evidence or any did you know any report that to show some kind of risks that uh with wet worker has now facing in 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 ASEAN? Any evidence that uh wet worker has been affected by the by the COVID from uh from uh from from their work?
Uh actually, about that is one of the 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 discussion within our team also, because it's very difficult to uh have some kind of a information quickly, but we we found that it is infected to the waste workers, especially the 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 areas, because we are the not much properly organized by the waste work, maybe it's like informal waste workers, because in some countries, we have very strong informal sector organizations like in India. So there are waste workers, informal waste workers are well organized and then managing these organizations, so they have very good uh information system, education and the support system to the workers. But the the others where the the workers are working without such kind of organization system, so we feel they have infected, but the the reporting system is very weak in many countries. Because if you you know that if something happened to the very famous person, it is quickly reported, but this kind of a waste workers, it's not much reported, but we are now doing some research to understand how how it is affected to the to the waste workers, so that is uh one of the the information gap in in this situation, so yeah, so that is very important point, so but we couldn't find some quick data uh to show that how many number of waste workers were affected, so we cannot find that information yet.
Yeah, thank you very much, Dr. Kumara, I'm very much looking forward to see that's a new fighting from your team. So um I think we are a little bit behind the schedule, so one again allow me to say thank you very much, Dr. Kumara, for your excellent presentation and talk today. And next, please allow me to invite the next speaker. So our next speaker is Dr. Nguyen Ling Dan, he's a she's now a visiting lecturer at the faculty of environmental, climate change and urban study at the National Economics University in Vietnam. Uh so before joining the National Economic U S D, Dr. Ling Dan's already spent many year at the Asia Pacific Energy Research Center. It is a cap research institute for IPEC Bay in Tokyo. So I believe that Dr. Ling Dan has a lot of experience on on in the field of energy and also the climate chain. And so today's see gonna explain earth about share about how the COVID impacts in on the on the economies in Vietnam as well as the progress toward achieving at easy goal in in Vietnam, so Dr. Ling Dan, floor you, yeah.
Okay, um thank you very much, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Chair, I thank you organizer for inviting me, for giving me a chance to talk today in the very interesting Vang Chee Conference. Um I'm gonna talk about the COVID pandemic and its impact on environment and S D G in Vietnam on behalf of Professor Tan Tho that from the National Economics University. Um just a little bit about myself, I've just come back as the the chair has just introduced, I've just come back from Japan after eleven years of staying in Japan, staying and learning, studying, working. And my last four year in Japan, I've been I've been working at the national, I'm sorry, at the Asia Pacific um Energy Research Center in Tokyo. And some of the slides in this presentation, I will use the my research result from what I have done in the A perk. So um let me begin my presentation by let me check if it can run smoothly, okay. So my presentation, I will talk about two things. The first thing is about the COVID nineteen, the war in Vietnam, and the next topic is about how Vietnam developed the economics after COVID nineteen, so um I believe that in our session, there will, there have been many people talking about how coronavirus has spread it. Uh I just wanna show this slide that I've just got it from the World Health Organization um a few days ago, saying that the spread of the COVID is very serious and it doesn't have the sign to cool down. So if you can see, the number of people totally have been infected by the virus have been up to forty-three million cases all over the world, and over one million people have been die from it. Uh and especially America, Americas, there are around more than twenty-five million people have been confirmed, and Southeast Asia, which include Vietnam, is not the is not the exception. Um so in order to tackle with this serious pandemic, there are many measures, and one of the measure is the social distancing. It has been proven to be very effective to flatten the curve of infections. Um maybe I don't need to explain about the definition of social distancing, because we are all experience this social distancing, because of social distancing, we have to change from the um in-person meeting to this kind of conference meeting. And this is a very new experience that all of us have been try our best to adopt ourselves to. Uh there are many advices during social distancing, for example, we should clean our hands very often, we should use soap. Uh we should wear a mask and we don't shouldn't touch our faces, etc. Uh and the most term, the most popular term that we have heard of is like stay home, right? And I believe that everybody who is living in Tokyo is familiar with this term stay home. So uh what should we do during the stay home time? Uh from a paper of John Hoppskin University, uh they have listed several practice of social distancing, which include so schools and colleges and university, they try to change in-person lessons to remote lessons. And the cities cancel all the events, including sports, sports, festivals, parades. Um companies trying to promote more flexible work options like telecommuting or teleconferences. Organizations and businesses cancel large gatherings, and even the house of worship, they suspend their services. And one of my friends, she used to go to the church do in every Sunday. And recently, she has to change to like worship activities through the online system. And church is also very, church is also very fast in adopting this kind of practice of social distancing. So what is the result of this social distancing during COVID nineteen? Um as all of us can 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 expect, the during the social distancing, the travel demand drops significantly. And we see a lot of changes in travel, not only travel demand, but also the travel mode. People change from public, the people reduce their public use of of transport, especially during peak hour. Um they try to shift their work from the peak hour to the less less peak hours and less car traffic as well, because many people do not have to go to work. Uh and also, people try to ordering food to home instead of instead of going out. So for example, restaurants, cafe, coffee shop, etc., they don't have a lot, they reduce a lot of their customers. Um and in general, the consumptions, the social consumption reduces a lot. Um industrial activities also slow down. If you can remember, in the beginning of this year, many industrial parks have to close because of the fear of spreading the coronavirus, while people don't have any information about this very strange and new type of virus. Um so now we know that the impact of coronavirus to our economy and also our social system is very heavy. However, there is a little bit of bright side if regards to the environmental effects. According to a paper to from Room and Islam in early this year, sorry, I think May this year. They say that especially for the environment, there are both negative impact and positive impacts, so um uh e- economy and social, they almost have negative impact, but for environment, negative impact almost light on the now the waste management, for example, there are a lot of medical waste which include hazardous waste as well, so there will be a challenge for the environment. And also, when people trying to prevent themselves from being transmitted by the virus, they try to throw away things more quickly, such as mask, or they try to reuse the reuse of things as we used to be, or even recycle is less than before. Um however, there are a lot of positive impacts to the environment, for example, the as I just has mentioned, the transport has been reduced uh and also the consumption of the resources and the waste disposal in in the in general is also lower than usual. Um emissions from transport, industry and power is also reduced due to the less act less this due to less activities. And the tourist destination have less pressure, because there's less tourists coming to the the place as before. Yeah, so that's why we recently, we can experience the air quality improving, especially in the urban area such as Hanoi City or Ho Chi Minh City. Um so that's the general information in the world and how the COVID situation and how the COVID affect Vietnam, and let's have a look at the at the at the figure on your left-hand side, also my my left-hand side as well. Uh this figure I took from the Ministry of Health in Vietnam. So this is just before the second wave of coronavirus in July in two thousand twenty. So as you can see, the infected cases is only like uh up to four hundred cases, and there is no death at all. Uh and looking at your left-hand side, the figure in your left-hand side, which I have just taken um a days a day ago, the confirmed cases in Vietnam after the second wave of the coronavirus is now up is now only one thousand three hundred people. And the number of death, let me let me move the screen, the number of death is just thirty-five people. Thirty-five people um is a lot, but if you compare to other other uh data of other countries, it is very, very minor. For example, in Japan, as far as I concerned, there is around one hundred forty, one hundred forty thousand people of infected by the virus and almost two thousand people die from this disease, not to mention America with all Americas, with up to twenty-five million people infected. So this is to say that the cases, the number of cases, both cases and death in Vietnam is very limited. So what I can conclude it from this is that I have I can do the two conclusion. The first one is that the COVID doesn't really affect Vietnam very seriously if compared to other countries in the world. And also, the Vietnam's response to the COVID has shown to be very swift, very sharp and very effective, and we already uh we we should say that successfully control the outbreak and move it back to its tracks. Um talking a little bit about the economic growth, because the COVID nineteen doesn't really do a very heavy um heavy burden to the economy, so although we experience around like one or two percent of GDP growth in this year to twenty twenty, but many international organization, even the Vietnamese government also project that we are going to experience, we are going to return to our economic growth pathway in two thousand twenty-one ahead. Um if you can see from this curve, the curve before twenty twenty, Vietnam has been experienced very high growth and one of the highest growth in Southeast Asia and also in Asia region uh up to six point eight or seven percent per year. And we are going to go back on track or even higher according to, for example, A D B, A D B. Um I think I think this is not their last number, but one of their temporarily number for twenty twenty-one is like eight point two, it like amazingly high. And also for, let me show, six point five, six point five is our government target. Um even for I M F, I M F in your brown, in the brown line, in the brown line, they project us to be like seven percent next year, so this is to say that um COVID nineteen although have a very heavy uh burden to the economy in twenty twenty, but it's going, the economy is going to return to its track from next year. Um and some, just some of the conclusion from Bloomberg, they say that among the Southeast Asian countries, only Vietnam will witness a positive economic growth this year, showing that Vietnam's effort in tackling with COVID is is a very significant. And on the twenty twenty-one economic outlook, Vietnamese economy will outgrowth other Southeast Asia countries. Um okay, so the second story I want to share with you is how Vietnam will recover and how we will continue with developing the S D G after COVID nineteen. Um let's talk a little bit about S D G, I believe that this topic has already been covered in our previous talks. And we already know that there is seventeen Sustainable Development Goals, which have been developed from the millennium goals. Um this seventeen goals is more inclusive and more um practical to our current situation. And if we can count from this seventeen goals, there are at least seven, eight goals that is related to the environment, showing that the environment, showing that we have to pay at least half of our effort to improve our environment in order to um to achieve the Sustainable Development Goals, for example, goals number three is about good health and well-being. Uh good hea- good health cannot be achieved if we don't have a good environment leave. And number six is clean water and sanitation. Uh number seven, eleven, and twelve, especially um yeah, especially deal with the energy consumption um to require, we have, we need to use energy more uh to use energy cleaner, more affordable and more sustainable. Uh so that's about S D G, and this slide is to show the importance of the environment to our life, which is also taken from the World Health Organization. Uh environment impacts our life and our health in many ways. Uh for example, in climate change, in agriculture practices, in radiations, it gives us a radiation uh to maintain our lives, our green lives, and also recently the renewables energy. And it it also uh affect us, it also give us a very clean air. Or um on the other hand, it can also yeah it provide us with a very bad air if we don't really protect it. So especially in uh in Vietnam, uh there are many reasons that uh caused the environmental degradation in Vietnam. Uh and many of them uh are because of the energy using. Uh for example, energy usage directly related to, at least for aspect of life, uh transport, building, uh industry, power, and um also other fields, for example agriculture, uh and uh other household activities, urban planning and waste management, waste management, etc. Environmental issues in Vietnam also um are highlighted by the deforestation. Um deforestation uh caused a lot of recent disaster that you um must have already heard of. For example, the flood recently flood in Vietnam, in the central of Vietnam this year. Uh and many, many of the um consequences that we have been experienced from the degradation is because of our long-term economic growth and our um and our pathway of economic, not only because of the temporary effect. Uh so um yes, as I have just concluded from this causes, uh they need more long- longer term interventions than the short-term or temporary impacts of the pandemic. So in the previous slide, I um have mentioned that the COVID nineteen have uh temporary impact to the environment, that is very nega- that is very positive. However, um if we want to tackle with environmental issues in Vietnam, we cannot rely on that kind of short term and we cannot be um very optimistic about this short-term improvement uh in two thousand twenty twenty that we already see in our pre- in the previous few months. Um this slide I took from a research from um Professor Shin Tho Dat and his colleagues um about the forecast of Vietnam economy to twenty forty-five uh compared to Korea, China, Malaysia, and the three scenario of Vietnam economy. Um the three, the the most, the three highest uh line represent um respectively Korea, Malaysia and China. And in our most um optimistic scenario, Vietnam will uh reach to the same level of the three countries in twenty forty-five uh with around seventy thousands, uh seventy thousand uh dollars of GDP per capita. So um not only international organization, but also in Vietnam, especially our um government has put a very high target for the economy growth in the future. Um however, uh if you um ever heard of the power shortage in Vietnam or you, if you ever experienced the uh power, electric city price increase in Vietnam, for example, the things which is very um near our, to our daily life. Um you will know that we have serious problems related to energy uses, u- usage. Um economic growth is always coupled with the energy use. So in order to promote the economic, we need to use enough energy to um uh ensure the growth of the economy in the future and also to um support the expansion of the population. So the Asia-Pacific Energy Research Center in two thousand nineteen has just make um projection of energy use for all um epic economies, including Vietnam. Uh and this is the projection of Vietnam to two thousand fifty. Uh as you can see from the figure on your left, uh the energy use keep increasing very sharply. And in two thousand fifty, the total demand of energy use usage almost double the level in um two thousand sixteen. And one of the most rapidly uh increase in the demand is transport. And then um industry will still be the key, uh the key sector that will use energy in the future. Energy here, um if you can see your left hand figure, energy here in which is includes electricity, renewables, gas, oil and coal. And the color, the the yellow color and also, um I'm sorry, this is like orange color and the black color represent oil and coal, which is fossil fuel. Um is almost like three fifth of the energy usage in twenty fifty. So from this kind of image, you can, you can imagine that in the future, we will use a lot of oil in order to satisfy our transport demand and a lot of coal in order to satisfy our industry demand with our current technology. Um there are, April also developed several different scenario to in, to reduce the emission of the carbon dioxide. Uh for example, the TGT and the two DC, uh which is uh like less emission using more renewable and um using less um coal and oil. So um by sector, if we trying to, you know, to relieve the burden to the environment, we will, we can reach the total final demand in two thousand fifty to eighty-eight MTO. Eighty-eight MTO is equivalent to like one point five or one point two of the two thousand sixteen level. Uh and ju- just to mention that the, in the BAU, that I have just show you in the figure, the in your figure to the, in the left, the BAU will double um the energy, energy amount. But in the two DC, it will also, it will only increase like one point three to one point five times. And by fuels, uh the most significantly uh improve, even improve is in the renewables. In the renewables, uh as you can see, the MTO, the percentage, the share, the share of, although the absolute number of renewables almost stay the same, but the share of renewables will increase a lot if we try to reduce our emission as much as possible. Um this slide is to compare the emission between the three scenarios and also to compare with the NDC. The NDC of Vietnam is the national determine uh contribution of Vietnam. Uh because Vietnam joined the Paris Agreement, so um we develop the the intended national determine contributions, the INDC, and now we confirm with the NDC. The NDC, oh, in this figure, we use the NDC in two thousand sixteen. Uh but currently, we are revising and we have just, um I think we have just published the new NDC number, which um uh include a higher target of emission. But compared to the NDC in two thousand sixteen, that we target to reduce around eight to uh eight percent to twenty-five percent of emission in twenty thirty. Uh we believe that if we continue to uh control the, our, uh our growth, continue to replace our energy system with renewables and also um to take care about the transport system, to change the mode of uh transport into a more ef- uh and um efficient use of fuel, we will um successfully uh reach our NDC target. Um to conclude my presentation, I would like to to um say some key takeaways. So um in this presentation, we talk about the impact of COVID and also not only to the environment, but also to SDG in general. Um so I should say that in the long term, uh not for Vietnam specifically, not only the contemporary pandemic, but the economic growth model would have a greater influence on the implementation of the SDG uh in Vietnam, because the impact of COVID is not that serious. So we need to pay more attention to the economic growth than the COVID impact itself. And the second takeaway is that if the economy continue to grow as business as usual, so the current positive effect of COVID on the environment, for example, improving the air quality, um improving the uh the waste management, for example, and that positive effect will not last long. So we need to consider this current, this temporary impact and to continue to improve it or to maintain it in the future. And also, it's the high time for the government to reconsider the primary resources of pollution, such as transport or energy-related activities, and to take advantage of that short-term contraction through stage of to develop the more sustainable pathway for the economy. The contraction uh through stage is uh shown in the figure that I have just shown you a few slides, a few slides ago. It's like going up and going down. So we can see, we consider it's as the contracts, contraction stage. Um but we shouldn't like, if we continue that kind of stage uh and we continue to our, our previous normal, that would, that would have nothing to say. Uh that would have nothing to to be improved for our sustainability. But we need to reconsider it and to change our economy model in order to um have for a more sustainable pathway of the economy. So that's my presentation. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ling Dan, for very comprehensive presentation, giving a very uh good picture of a few pictures on how the COVID impacts in Vietnam, not only on the economics aspect, but also on various area like energies and environment and so on. Um so I believe there's many, many questions from the audience. Uh but unfortunately, because of the, our session a little bit um behind the schedule, so we need to spend time for other session. So then allow me to accept one or two question from the audience. So I I received one question from the audience regarding to your presentations on the, on the prediction of GDP uh in two thousand twenty-one. You said that eight point one percent. Uh but the the question is, um let's assume that the the whole world succeed in addressing the COVID nineteen and what are the factor which enable Vietnam to grow that mu- that much? And which is much uh latter than the, than before the Corona, like six point five percent. What what could be the factor? Yeah.
Yeah, that will be a very interesting um question. Uh the reason why I show many uh projections, not only from Bloomberg, but also from World Bank, ADBMF, etc., because many, uh they have a different point of view and they have different assumptions in projecting the GDP. So um I guess that um and even our government al- only put the target of six point five. Uh but for the, for example, Bloomberg, they um projected like eight point, eight point, I'm sorry, like, yeah, eight point one percent. I think that they um put a very high expectation into Vietnam economy, including the transition of many factories from China to Vietnam and the recover of the economy, which shows a very stable politics and which um politics and um uh economic growth, uh very, very stable and very um, what should I say, a very reliable medical system. Um if other countries continue to be, you know, highly affected by the COVID and and that's true, because at the same time, with this projection for Vietnam, the projection for other countries is very low. Like I've just mentioned, the S, um Vietnam is only one country in the region who can experience the positive growth. So assuming that kind of difference in economic, uh in in recovery capability, uh we have higher chance to get more number of tourists and we can have higher chance to recover our economy system, including tourism, including industrial, because we successfully um can attract the factories moving from China, for example. And such kind of factors, I think, can contribute a lot to this kind of growth according to the assumptions of Bloomberg, for example.
Yeah, thank you very much for your nice response. Um let's, one more question. Um you know that in Vietnam, we are quite succeed in stopping the spread of the COVID effect to the community. Um I think many country want to learn from that, uh even Japan. So nowadays, uh every day we receive like more than two thousand case, a new case. So so uh what could be, according to your opinion, what could be the succeed factor that help the country to, to completely stop the 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 impact or the spread of the COVID uh like, like, like what we can achieve nowadays? Yeah.
Um I think there would be like two main factors. There are, there must be many factors that help Vietnam to tackle with this pandemic very quickly. But I think there will be two main factors. The, the first one is the top-down measures. The top-down measures of Vietnam is very effective, very sharp, very swift. And because we used to be, we always the top-down economy, so it's very easy to um do any kind, to implement any kind of regulations, especially in doing quarantine. And also, the second reason is like the bottom-up measures. So we have been building a very effective social system with the help of social media. Uh and we have like small social uh division, which can control each other like a small community. So um we, I think, um because of the, of the desire or of the willing of both the government and the the people in general, uh we can together tackling with this uh this COVID. And if I can say a very um, a very like informal reason for this kind of success, it like, it should be the personal uh information in Vietnam, which is not uh being protected very, very um, yeah, very carefully as in other countries. So it's very easy to define, to detect the the F one or F two or F zero. Uh so that's it. I think it's also a very informal reason that can help um tackling with this kind of pandemic.
Yeah, I think, thank you very much. It's very interesting to to hear from from that. I hope you can prepare some paper to to share with international communities about this lesson. Um so I think that's all from our sessions. Um one again, on behalf of organizing committee, I like to express my um sincere thanks to all the speaker for your excellent presentation and talk today. And also like to say thank you very much for all the participant, for your very patient to to join our session, although it's already behind the schedule, I I think more than thirty minutes. So one again, I hope that this session will give a audience and participant a lot of um a much better understanding how the COVID is impact, uh effect to our society, especially on the, on the global progress toward achieving the EDG, uh not only at the global scale, but also in 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 case of Vietnam as well. So with that, I like to conclude the session. Uh and one again, thank you very much, everyone. Have a nice day. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, much. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.